Thank you everyone for coming. We're gonna get started, just so we, you know, don't stay too late. Gonna ask like no side conversations for a little while, so we can hear what's going on. We'll lots of time to chit chat later, so, um, so just hang on, so.
Real quickly, I'm Karen Bernacki, I am the co-president of Legal Women Voters with Regina Riddell, and we're co-sponsoring this with progressives.
Progressive Democrats in La Porte County.
Okay, so make sure. We're excited to see so much enthusiasm about running for office. So hey, I think we should get ourselves a hamburger bean here.
Yeah.
Right, it's very exciting, I mean, this is so exciting. So it takes, it's a big step to, to get out there and even learn about the opportunities to run for office. So I hope that, I know that you will learn a lot tonight, and we hope that we'll have some dialogue, and we can learn from each other, and learn how to fill out that application, and make some great change for La Porte County. So thank you for being here. One more thing, if you want to find out more about the Legal Women Voters and to become a member, because you all should be, it isn't just women, it is men. The webpage is LWVLaPorte.org, so I encourage you all to go on and become members. And we have a legislative breakfast this Saturday at Portofino's at nine for our members. So if you want to attend, you'll need to become a member. But it's a great opportunity to have dialogue, a real honest conversation with your people who are making your laws and policies in the state of Indiana and in our federal government. So I encourage you to do that as well, so thank you.
Great, and then just, I want to introduce other Legal Women Voters Board members here. Bonnie Schaff, Dahlia Ziegus, any other board members? Anyway, but thank you, Tori. I'm sorry, Belly. Belly, so thank you for everything you do, for, you know, the League and getting people educated. So I'm Deb Chubb, and this is Candace Antistel. And, and we have some other council people here too. So that'll be helpful, you know, for answering questions. We hope that they'll also pipe in Don Chris Bolinsky and Dahlia Ziegus, both current city council members. I didn't miss anybody, right? Okay, great. So, and if everybody got one of these informational sheets when you checked, when you came in, this is, this is kind of explaining what positions are up for election this year. So in La Porte, Michigan City, Long Beach, and Michiana Shores, basically, it's all just municipal elections this year. And so, but it shows how many wards and how many at-large in each of those municipalities. And we have a big map of the wards for Michigan City back there, so you can find out what ward you live in. We're having a little trouble with the La Porte Ward map. It sounds like it's been changed, we have a map back there, but sorry, it's not, it's not very helpful. The best thing to do to find out what ward you are in, if you're here from La Porte, is to go to indianavoters.com, put in your name and everything, and it'll show you what all of your districts are, your congressional district, everything, all the way down to what ward you live in, in the city. So that's the best way to figure that out. So, uh, we're gonna go over the forms a little bit later, because I don't want to, you know, turn everybody off with these terrible, terrible forms. But, but I'm hoping to, you know, hear from Candace first, just to kind of give you an idea about, you know, what it was like to run. You know, I do a lot of work with candidates, and one thing that all candidates must have is they must know why they are running. So that's always an important question, if you're considering running, you must know why you are running. And you will probably say it, you know, if you run, many, many times. So, we, you know, it's a good idea to think it through. So that's what I want to ask you first, Candace. Why did you run?
I ran for the very most basic reason, I wanted to make a difference in my community. I saw a need in the second ward for leadership, and I went ahead and ran. I'd already been involved in the community in several different factions, including working very closely with the Michigan City Area School System, so took it just the next step.
Excellent, okay, great. And so, another question that often comes up is, how did you assemble a campaign committee? Because you have to have a committee.
I made a mistake. I actually did not really do a campaign committee, because I was afraid to ask people to help. I did it all myself, the second ward is actually kind of a smaller ward, and that is the biggest mistake you can make. If you are running for office, people will want to help you, and all you have to do is ask. Especially if you are running on a large scale, if you are running like city council at large, if you are running for a county-wide position, you are not gonna be able to hit all these doors, hit all these precincts, and make an impact. So yeah, you definitely need to assemble a campaign team. I always recommend to my candidates, I do political campaign management for a living, we do a lot of school referendums, I have a couple sitting senators prosecuting attorneys and sheriff's, currently in office around the state that I've helped. But the very first person you are going to need is a chairperson or a co-chair. These are the people who are just gonna be there for you, they're gonna lend their name and their face to the campaigns. It's best if you get somebody who is well-known, well-respected in your area that you are running. And that just allows other people to say, hey, I really respect Don Casbolinski, for example, and if Don's putting his name behind this person, I can trust them too. You will need a treasurer, this is often the most scariest thing, the thing people are most worried about taking on, because the thought and the concept of taking on people's money is kind of scary, and keeping track of that, because if you are running for office, you will need to file campaign finance reports. There are several of them due here. But it's not that scary, it's, it's very easy to track. There's templates all over the internet you can use to keep track of that. You will need a get-out-the-vote team, people underestimate the power of going door-to-door in your community. It's very scary, it's very intimidating, but when you get those extroverts who absolutely love talking to people, that's, that's where you stick up. You'll need a media team, a social media team, especially in this day and age, a social media team, somebody to help you manage Facebook, Instagram. If you are doing things on a larger scale, commercials, billboards, you will need a fundraising team. If you are doing things on a larger scale, I only raised a couple hundred dollars, all I paid for really was yard signs. And then you will also need constituent advocates. These are people who, when something is being brought up at events, they go out and they support you, they basically brag about you to, to everybody and anybody who will listen. So, that is the very basics of a campaign team that you should assemble, and I made a huge mistake in that doing it myself, so.
That's great, excellent. So, I was gonna ask you something there, but, all right. And so you mentioned how much, you only raised a couple hundred dollars?
I only raised a couple hundred dollars.
That's pretty low.
It is.
For a campaign, I would not expect to run again.
But again, I, I work for a campaign management, so we get our yard signs in bulk, so I got a huge discounted deal for my yard sign, so, yeah.
Okay, yeah, and, so, so the cost, I mean, so the cost, you know, includes yard signs, you know, some kind of door hanger thing?
Yeah, palm cards.
Yep, yeah, like business cards, palm cards. And, you know, you can, you know, you can do all kinds of things, you can do a billboard, you could do banners.
And depending on what you, yeah, depending on what you want to do, that's important. Again, especially on a larger scale. You are gonna want to raise funds to do digital advertising, those banner ads that pop up on the internet, our, our local newspapers will do those for you. Social media ads, super important, fairly inexpensive, you can reach a, a large range of people. If you want to do text messaging, you can do text messaging. Email service of, you can get like MailChimp or something fairly inexpensive to send out those mass emails. Those, those are other things you can use.
Yeah, so there's really, you know, there's no limit to what you can do.
The more money you can raise, the better. The more you can get your name out there, it's all about name recognition.
Right. But, but never forget that really, the most important, the most effective thing is really knocking on doors, talking to people at their doors. You know, that is the most effective campaign strategy, more so than anything, yard signs, whatever. Knocking on people's doors is really the best thing. And so if you're running for an at-large position, you know, that means you're gonna have to cover a much larger territory. So in Michigan City, there are three at-large positions, and so those, if you're running for-
And thirty-something thousand registered voters, so.
In the, oh, in the city of Michigan City, are only our own population-
No, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm fine.
But it doesn't include, every ten years when the census is taken, the inmates at the Indiana State Prison are included in the city's population count. Currently, there's twenty-four hundred inmates, so we're kind of around, without the prisoners, we're around twenty-nine thousand five hundred.
Population, right.
Population.
So, I would say about sixty percent of that are registered voters, you know, so anyway. So, it'll be a lot, but if you're running in one particular ward, then of course, it's just, it's a much smaller area, much smaller number of houses that you have to hit. And it doesn't have to be you knocking on every single door, it can be, you know, part of your committee. Of course, it's best when it's you, because people want to talk to the candidate. But, but yeah, mostly it's, that is really the most important thing, more than money, more than anything. So, okay.
Exactly.
Let's see.
And it's also inexpensive, all you need is your palm card.
Right, it can be very, it can be very, very inexpensive. I mean, that's really the basics, our business cards, and, you know, and some yard signs. So yard signs cost something like, I don't know, I was lucky this last cycle, and I think I got them for three dollars a piece. I mean, that's, and that's very cheap. So, so, and of course, the price goes down the more you get. But, anyway, it's not, it's not that expensive, I don't want anyone to, you know, feel like they shouldn't run because of money.
No, shoestring budget is, you can do it, but it's just easier when you have more money as with anything in life, I guess.
It is. So, okay, so those are all the really basic questions that I have. And so, is there anything else? And I just want to open it up then too, really, to anybody that has questions.
I just want to add something that's really, I think it's really important to know if anybody's gonna run for a city council seat. First of all, if you've ever been convicted of a felony, you are prohibited to run for city council. If you sit on the council and you do something stupid and you get convicted of a felony, you will have to leave the council, or you let somebody out to caucus, you might as well have caucus in. You need to know, in Indiana, our cities are divided into three classes. We have a city of the first class, we have a city of the second class, and we have cities of the third class. In Indiana, we only have one city of the first class, that is our state capital of Indianapolis. They have a population of nine-hundred-one-thousand people. A population of over half a million people are a city of the first class. Their city council is represented by a whopping twenty-nine council members. Michigan City is one of twenty-four cities that is classified as a city of the third class. Those are cities with a population now between thirty-four thousand and four-hundred thousand nine-hundred ninety-nine.
Second class, Tom.
Second class.
Or city's second class, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay. Michigan, though, we are below that, we're back in the seventies, we were over thirty-five thousand, we're still grandfathered in. If a city don't want to drop down, they want to stay the same. We'll lose too much funding, we just had a big, when we had our redistrict meetings. Actually, there's actually two other cities, I had a conversation with Mayor Oberly about this when he was in office. Besides Michigan City, there's only two other cities that has a, is still a city of the second class despite being, having a population of over thirty-four thousand. One of those cities is East Chicago, and the other one is Marion, Indiana. Finally, you have a city of the third class, which is like La Porte, you know, we were really like La Porte. They have, they're represented by five council members, five ward, and two at-large. And, well, let me get back to Michigan City. We have a council of, we have nine members of our council. And we have, you know, six at, three at-large, six ward. And we have a elected city clerk, and we have a mayor. In a city of the third class, they have seven, they have seven council members, five ward, two at-large. They don't have a controller, the controller's office is merged in with the clerk, like Courtney Parthum. She is the La Porte Court Treasurer. And finally, on the city of the, the third class, the mayor serves as the president of the city council, like Mayor Dermody. He's the president of the city council, he's the city president, and he only votes in, in case of a tie. And tie, there's what constitutes a town, a town is basically run by a board, you know, it's, it's... And the other thing you need, if you're gonna run for, for council, you need Article Two of the Michigan City Municipal Code. It pretty much explains everything, how the meetings are run, how, this is just what I wanted to add.
Good, so, and you, and that last point is a really important one. If you're interested in running for city council, you should attend some city council meetings, or at least look at them on video, you know, just to see how the meetings run, and get to know more about the procedure, and, and, you know, all of that decorum, and all of the way of everything.
And you also need to understand that it's not just the two city council meetings a month that you attend, there are other commitments and other obligations. In addition to your two city council meetings, you'll be assigned to other committees, and those meetings have one or two meetings a month. The time commitment can be astronomical, especially if you are on the finance committee and it is budget time. You will be having meetings five evenings a week. At the bare minimum, you have to attend your two city council meetings and your committee assignments. And that's at the bare minimum, you literally can fill every single evening with an event, so.
Great, and just, some other kind of basics, you know, the council is the legislative branch of the government at the local level, and so they are responsible for the budget and the spending. And of course, the mayor is the executive branch, and then of course, we have, well, we don't have any city courts here, but... But, so, that's basically, the basic responsibility for city council is funding, is funding. But they pass ordinances as well. So, okay, anything else down here you'd like to add? I did see another hand up there some, somewhere, yes, go ahead, I'm sorry.
You mentioned something about, about fundraising. Is that something that you have to file for with your taxes? I remember you said something about a fundraiser, something you had to file for financials.
If you file as a candidate for anything, and you open a bank account, you will need to apply for an EIN number with the IRS. You will use it for strictly banking purposes. You will create an account to save for your campaign funding, and then you do have to report that. You have a pre, pre-primary report due, and then you have another report due, and then you have another one at the end of the year, so you have three campaign finance reports due total.
Is that considered non-for-profit?
No.
Yeah, it's not quite like that, it's not like a business or anything. So, so you get your EIN number, which is, it stands for Employee Identification Number, and it's really easy to get, and you open a bank account, but then you also have to file what's called a CFA-1. And that's what you do with the state that sets up your account, so that you can submit your campaign finance reports. And so, in, one of the, one of the documents, yeah, we'll give you, this is really, did I do it like that? So, yeah, anyway, so, so there's a, and of course, the first date that, you know, that we should be thinking of is February third, and that's the deadline to file your, your candidacy. And you would file that at the county courthouse, so you would just file it with the county clerk. They may, they'll maybe make you go over to the voter registration office, depending on what party you're filing, is it Democrat or Republican? You'll go over there and they'll check to see that you have pulled a Democratic ballot in the last, whatever, two primaries, or Republican, if you're filing as a Republican. If you haven't voted, it doesn't mean you can't run, you really just have to go through your county party chair. So, and if you are a Democrat, and wanting as a Democrat, our Democratic Party County Chair happens to be here tonight. So, Angie Hensman, so she's newly elected to the, the position of Democratic Party Chair. So she would be the person to talk to if, you know, if your voting record doesn't really support you running as a Democrat or as a Republican, and she can, she can allow that, so.
I might add that that clerk's office is in La Porte, the La Porte courthouse, not the Michigan City one.
Right, so you have to go to La Porte to find it. So, so, let's see, that's great, and then, did we answer your question?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good, okay, other questions?
Turn your affiliation.
Yes?
It has to be Democratic or Republican?
It doesn't, you can run as an independent, it's a different form that you use, I think, yeah. Oh, yeah, so, and we do have a few of them, if you wanted to run as something other than a Democrat or Republican. It's a little, yes, there's a way, yeah, it's a petition thing, yes.
I just want to add, you have to reside in the city limits. If you have a Michigan City address, if you're unincorporated, or you live in Potawatomi Park, or no, you have to reside within the city limits of Michigan City. The other thing about the door-to-door campaigning, like, if you're selling something, there is no going door-to-door selling or soliciting unless you have a permit, you gotta have to get a permit from the Board of Works. The exception is, political candidates and religious organizations may go door-to-door, however, they are prohibited to leave any type of literature at the resident's doorstep. However, you may hand it to them if they're willing to accept it.
Great, thanks, yes, go ahead.
And recognize what he's saying, so you're telling me if I go in my neighborhood door-to-door, I can't give literature?
No, yes, you can, if it's political.
Well, of course, political.
You can leave it, you can actually, you can leave it at the door, you cannot touch the mailbox. It's if you touch the mailbox.
Any person is prohibited to leave any type of literature at the resident's doorstep. That includes political and religious organizations.
What I, what I would do is, if anybody would be interested in doing that, going door-to-door, I would check with the city code officer to make sure that that's a true statement. Because I ran three times now, and on every election, I put door hangers out, and I have never read any recent questions.
Yeah, you absolutely cannot touch the mailbox, so.
Yeah, you put it in the mailbox, right, that's a federal offense.
They will, they would, if you just leave it at one mailbox, they will charge you for the entire area.
So you said on the door, though, is fine, on the doorknob?
Yes, on the doorknob.
Door hangers.
And we can definitely double-check, but we, we just did it this last fall and everything, so.
Yeah, I've never had a problem with that either.
Yeah.
Okay, other questions?
By the way, if anybody wants the not Democratic or Republican form, I have some of those, you raise your hand. So that you don't run in the primary, you just run on the general election, and you need to get ten signatures.
And on that note, Tommy, I will say that a lot of times people tell-
You'd better talk to Amber about that.
Yeah, we can, we can definitely double-check. But as far as yard signs are concerned, a lot of people will tell you that their HOA prohibits yard signs. They actually cannot, they can prohibit how long you can have it up before an election, or how large the sign is, or how many you have. But if an individual wants to have a singular yard sign in their yard, their HOA cannot prohibit it, but it's protected by the state of Indiana, so.
Well, Candace, talk about yard signs. The other thing that is prohibited with yard signs is to put yard signs on the city easement.
In the right way, yeah.
You cannot do that, it has to be in the yard.
So, yeah, and generally, that means like on the inside of the sidewalk. That's, you know, that's like the easiest way to-
Not even through the sidewalk in the street, it has to be on the inside of the sidewalk.
Yep, they will pick your sign.
Or along highways, you can't stop and put ten signs out along the highway, because that's an easement, and that's-
Yeah, public property, right. Do you have something, Angie?
Yeah, along the lines of the yard signs, isn't there a law about something along, on your yard sign that says pay for buy?
You have to have a disclaimer.
Right, it's a disclaimer, you have to know, and there's, there's a brochure that is just for that. So it tells you, you know, it's things like, like clothing is exempt, you know, put your disclaimer on that. And you don't have to put it on the button if it's small, you know, so. But there's documents for that, and so I, you know, that's, all these little QR codes will take you to those documents. So, the 2023 Candidate Guide is kind of the big one, that's like eighty pages, but a lot of good information, a lot of good information, all kinds of details, like Tommy's given us, are all in there, so.
And then worst-case scenario, if you have a question, call the election board or email somebody on the election board and ask, because if an issue comes up, they're the ones who are going to be dealing with it, so.
Yeah, and they are super helpful, they're very, very-
Because some of this language is very hard to understand.
And the manuals, the campaign, the finance manuals, that's always confusing. Because it'll say, it'll say, do this, but this only applies, yeah, but only if you do this, and only if you're running for that, and if it's not this part, yeah, so that one's really confusing. So, so that's the first deadline to worry about then, it's February third, you have to file before then. So you have to file that CAN-42, and then, and then, it's as soon as you raise, what, five hundred dollars? You have to do the CFA?
I can't remember off the top of my head, it is something like that.
Soon, soon, you have it here. Oh, does it say? Oh, so, anyway, so, you don't, like, if you spend less than five hundred dollars on the whole thing, you don't even have to open a bank account, you don't have to file a CFA-1, you don't have to file the report.
I will put these near the door on the way out, you can pick one up. I don't have one for everybody, but if you're interested in the finance-
Oh, yeah, this is a CFA one, right.
And it's also been here on the sheet, on this sheet that we've just-
My personal recommendation, just file a CFA.
Yeah, just do it.
Transparency is so key, and people want to, to see it. If you're running for office and I'm not seeing a CFA for you, I'm gonna raise questions, so, yeah.
When you say you're not seeing a CFA for me, where would you go to find a CFA for me?
They are located on our county's website.
The form?
The reports.
Oh, okay, campaign finance.
As a voter, you know, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm new to this.
Yeah, so if you want to see someone else's-
We're all new at one point.
So I've never thought about looking at a CFA for a candidate. So that is something that, that validates you, is what you're saying?
I, I don't know if it validates you, but, again, it just provides that transparency. If you're spending money on a campaign, your voters should know who's funding your campaign, if that makes sense.
And you can look up anybody's CFAs, it's through the Secretary of State's office, IN.gov/ SOS, no, dot SOS slash elections, and then you'll, anyway.
It's public information, yeah.
I believe the county was publishing that as well.
Oh, okay.
The people who, you know, the bigger campaign donors, because I believe if you give over a certain amount, you have to be listed, what is that amount?
Right, so, yeah, most, all donations are generally listed, but, but, yeah, bigger, yeah, I mean, even smaller ones are, are listed individually, individual donors are listed on there. So, and it's all entered online now, so it used to be you filled out all these, you know, forms, and you put the amounts in there, but now you put it all in online, and, and it's much easier, the template's there, it's much better, it does all the calculating for you.
It is wonderful.
Yeah, oh, yeah, because those forms were very difficult. So, so, and then this is, you know, again, this is a really important document with all of the deadlines on there. So it has the deadline for filing, February third, I know I've said that a few times, I don't want to forget it, because that's the most important one, it is then deadline, by noon, and it's noon local time, so that's still us, okay, good.
Because if it's in Indianapolis, then it's different.
So, so, yeah, that's the most important one right now, making sure you find, file your CAN-42 by February third at noon. And then, after that, you know, primary day is, it's May, it's early, it's May, hang on, it's May second this time. So, so that's the primary day. And then certainly in Michigan City, where, you know, we're mostly Democrats, that's kind of the big elections. So, a lot of cases, no Republicans run for city council in Michigan City. So, so that's kind of the big one, that's where a lot of the work will be done, that's where most of the campaigning will be done. So, and-
Also, if the Republicans don't, if nobody runs in the primary, after the primary, the Republicans can also slate someone, they can caucus and slate somebody to run in that position. So, even if you don't have an opponent in the primary, it is so important for you to still put the work in, still make sure you are a public figure, make sure you are going door-to-door, because you need to build up that name recognition for the fall.
Is there a deadline to caucus in, or is it just before the primary?
So June thirtieth is about the right day, I mean, I know last time it felt like it kept changing, but it was right around, yeah, right, right around June thirtieth is the deadline. And so then the county chair would basically be responsible for putting someone in to fill a vacant ballot position, so, yeah, yes.
How do they choose that, they just choose the best candidate to fill that position?
Yeah, they just find out, or, you know, hopefully someone, you know, steps up, but often it's the county chair, or someone, you know, working with the county chair, just trying to find people to run.
Like Monday, July third, for that?
Yep, July third.
Well, it says July third, oh, great, great, yeah, July third, so, but I just count on June thirtieth, because all kinds of wacky things happen at that last minute. So, other questions?
Any advice from our current city council members, I ran a long time ago, so.
Yeah, so Dahlia, yeah.
It's a good experience, I mean, even if you don't win, you learn a lot, and you'll be much more ready for the next time, that's why.
Yeah, and that's true, and running and not winning is not, you know, there are a lot of things that you get out of that. And it's really something that you can use to, you know, to get, you know, appointed to other boards and things like that, that can help you next time. But, yeah, there's really, there's a lot to be learned, it's worth it. I mean, if you went into it knowing you were gonna lose, I know that's not feeling, it doesn't feel good, you're always believe you're gonna win, and you should believe you're gonna win. But, but either way, it is extremely valuable to run, even if you don't make it, yes?
I know we're talking about running for council positions, but are you guys gonna mention anything about boards and commissions as a way in?
Right, well, we did mention that too, you know, that is, one of the things, you know, that you need to do to get your name out there, to get more experience, is to get onto boards and commissions, and I know, and many of you are on boards and commissions, but there are lots of them out there. And you should keep an eye out for the city ones, in fact, like, right now, I believe, is when a lot of the commissions, positions are being appointed. Some are appointed by the mayor, some are appointed by the city council. I don't know, there are other, other people who appoint, it's mostly city council and the mayor.
Sometimes the organization is-
I was gonna say, yeah, there's organizations that-
I wonder, yeah, so they don't have to, also don't approve, but, yeah, many commissions require certain positions to be someone in the health field, or in, you know, from legal intervention. or in, you know, from legal interviewers or from, you know, some other NAACP. Yeah, right, right.
And they call those people that send people to boards and commissions, appointing authorities. And so if you're involved at your job in some, many organizations, many public opportunities to sit on boards and commissions.
Yes, there are lots of-
And in the city of Michigan City, there's a form that you have to fill out and it's online at E-Michigan City. If you're interested in sitting on boards and commissions, the ones where the mayor does the appointments, you have to show an interest where he doesn't know you're there to be chosen from.
Yeah, that's fair.
Right, right. Yes, there's a form you can fill out and, and, you know, submit to the mayor's office.
It's a one-page form. It's simple.
Yeah, very simple.
And it's, and like you were saying, Brian, it's a good stepping stone. Like if you want to get involved, but you're like, eh, maybe a huge campaign is not quite for me yet. We have so many boards and commissions. There's Park Department, the Housing Authority, just to, just to name a couple. You know, find something you're interested in, a veterans committee. Email council members or email the mayor, whoever's doing the appointments. All the information is available on E-MichiganCity.com.
And as a city councillor, you know, there is a city councillor who is liaison to most of those commissions. So as a city council member, you may be appointed or may choose to be a liaison to those commissions. But, yeah, there are just, and I don't know if, yeah, if you don't know, I mean, there's a women's commission, a human rights commission, commission on the social status of African-American males. There's a sustainability commission. And then there's the, there's the planning commission. There's the border zoning appeals. There's-
So many commissions.
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's a lot. And you should, you know, you can go onto the Michigan City website to see them all.
What's that place, the role of liaisons on those other boards? Is it, are they a voting member of that board or are they just representing each other on the-
In some they are.
Oh, oh, I haven't known that one.
Generally speaking, they just kind of sit in, observe. If they have, if they have an issue, for example, to animal control, if you're on the animal control board and they have an issue with an ordinance they want to change, you will act as the liaison between that board and the city council, who then will be responsible for amending and changing that ordinance.
So, yeah. So, yeah, and, right. And the liaisons really just, you know, help kind of guide the commissions. If there's, you know, municipal, you know, rules or, you know, anything that's going to affect what the commission might be trying to do, the city council liaison helps with that.
For example, I was on the school systems liaison. And, you know, you attend the school board meetings and you're a cheerleader for them. It was really all that position was. It was not a voting member by any means, but it was still fun. We got the promise scholarship moved through during that time and-
Who's our liaison now?
I don't know. Do you know Don? Is that Don?
No, actually, I do not know if the liaison is to the school system. I know what boards I'm the liaison, but I can't keep track of, you know, all twenty-six different-
Yeah, I mean, I'm on the school board and I don't see, I don't think I've seen any city council people at our meetings. Anyway, maybe that's a vacant one.
And they were just fun to attend, but, I don't know. It's fun to see what's going on in the cities that you care about, so.
I think too, like if you're, if you're interested in running and most of you are probably already involved in your community, but just to volunteer and get out there and kind of, and start to listen to what people around you are talking about and what some of the concerns are. I think you find that by volunteering all kinds of different ways in your own community. So you feel a little bit more empowered in, and kind of, I think you, and this is just me, but I think you need kind of that fire in the belly to take this jump and really, and represent the people in your community. So you need to, you need to know them. That would just be my-
That's great. Yeah, so, I mean, Don, can you say why you ran? What was the thing that sparked your interest in running?
To better, I mean, the bottom line is that everybody's here and everybody probably has the same mindset where he wouldn't be here. It's to make Michigan City the best possible place that it can be. Just like every morning when you get up. And in a position I have, that's my objective. If I see something, I'm gonna let people know. We gotta get it corrected. And so like Candace was saying, there is two meetings a month. First Tuesday and the third Tuesday. But in between that time, you're still a city servant. You're still working for the community. And if you're a ward councilman, you should be out there working for that ward, day in and day out, and make it the best ward you can have it. You know, if you see a house that's dilapidated or you see sidewalks that are crumbling or you see streets that are crumbling, then you should be up at the mayor's office banging on his desk saying, "I want these sidewalks fixed and I want the streets fixed." Not to mean you're gonna get them done, but that's the kind of attitude you gotta have if you're gonna be effective and an effective public servant. So that's kind of my take on being in public office is to make things better. Whether people want to hear it or not, you gotta stand up and represent the people.
And as an example, Don had me walking up and down Franklin Street one day showing me issues. So Don's one who is out there all the time.
So, and Dahlia, why did you have it?
Very similar reasons. I mean, I saw things that could be better in my eyes and, you know, I wanted to change the world. But you find out that you are part of a team and as an individual, you have not that much leverage. So you have to work with other people in the council. And it's kind of interesting because you don't know who you're gonna serve on the council with, do you? Like everyone's running at the same time, so, a kind of interesting thing. But, yes, the same, same idea. You know, I see things that I would like to see here. I think this is a great place and I want to work towards it, so.
Great, great. Brian?
It was pretty simple for me. I remember the first time I ran, News Dispatch called and asked me, "Why are you running for council?" It was a pretty simple answer because I could help my city. Done. I mean, he was sitting on the phone waiting for me to say more.
Yeah, so. So oftentimes it's something more specific. So I'm surprised. It's great that you guys all have these, you know, similar ones, reasons. But, I mean, oftentimes it's something very specific about, you know, the roads aren't getting paved, the potholes. I don't like the way that, you know, there's gentrification that I want to have a say about, you know, so sometimes it's more specific. But that's, you know, you guys all complete it.
Can I add on to the end of that? Sorry, Tommy.
No, why?
But I tell people this all the time. I only made one campaign promise when I ran for council and I still have only made one campaign promise in my whole life. I said I'll be able to explain any vote that I take. That's it. Like Dahlia said, you work as part of a team, so it's very rough for you to run out there and say, "Well, I'm gonna get these roads paved, these roads..." There's eight other people. There's a mayor. You have to work with everybody. So all the roads you want paved may not happen. That was the only campaign promise I ever made, was that if somebody came to me and asked me to explain a vote, I'd be able to explain that vote. And one goal that I really looked at, I said, "If I can be on the council and by the time I finish, if we have more people in Michigan City than when I started, that means we're doing something to bring people into Michigan City." I would see that as a huge success in regards to being on the city council. If our population can increase from the time I run, then you've done something to draw people into Michigan City.
I just want to say it's very fulfilling. Like I've told the council all at the last meeting, it's probably gonna go down with the, they made a historical landmark, groundbreaking decision. It's gonna go down as a chronic achievement by opening up the Michigan City Promise Scholarship for the students that rent. I mean, before it was only for the homeowners. I think that, now I could have a National Honor Society student. She's definitely gonna be, she's not gonna be applied, she's gonna be the recipient of it. They just vacated an alley for the new Health Link Clinic. Well, you know, they're gonna be able to tell all their families, "Well, you know, I'm on the council. I've voted to vacate. When this amazing clinic goes in, you know, I played a part in that." You know, those are the kind of things you get to do when you're a councilman for your city.
Right, that's great.
If I could give one bit of advice though, is make sure you are resilient. I always tell my candidates, when people come to me and tell me that they're thinking about running, people will be upset with you all the time. At any point in time, fifty percent of the population is gonna hate you for whatever reason. But you have to be resilient because what you are doing is so important. I'm exaggerating a little bit. People will be, people will be upset with you for, for, like, there were several votes I made that people were upset with me for, but I won the scholarship. People were so upset with the promise scholarship.
Yeah, I mean, I think as long as, you know, like, you know, Brian says, that, you know, I mean, you're comfortable, I mean, that's how I always felt, whatever vote I made. You know, I wasn't in the city council. I sat on the school board. But, you know, as long as I feel like I can explain my vote and I'm comfortable with the way I voted, I don't have any problem in it.
Yeah, I don't think I regret a single vote.
It's not a popularity contest. Sometimes you got, a lot like me, if I was on the council, the first ordinance I'd do would be impose the wheel tax, just like every other community around Northwest Indiana has. They put it on. LaPorte, Portage, Gary, Hammond, they all have it. We don't. Our roads are failing. The other thing is, like in Chicago, you go in Chicago, they charge you seven cents for every plastic bag you take out of the store. Look, all the litter we got on the South End. I'd put a ten cent bag fee for everyone you take out of the store.
But, yeah, resiliency is just very important. The work that you do is so important. Just stick with it.
And you will, yeah, you will be able to really help people. You really will. People will come to you with problems and you'll be able to help them. And, you know, and there's nothing better than that. So, okay, other questions? We haven't heard from you gentlemen in the corner there. Any questions?
No, I don't got no questions.
Are you interested in running?
My brother-in-law.
Your bro, is this your brother?
Yeah.
Oh, great. So you're, where's, this is your brother back here?
This one right here.
Oh, this one. Oh, okay, I see. I'm sorry. Okay. And sir back there, are you interested in running as well?
Not at this time. I've got too much on my plate.
Oh, I know.
No, you don't.
So, and then way behind you, are you interested in running?
One day.
One day, good.
I'm trying to learn everything.
Yeah, so, and so if you're not interested in running right now, but you're interested in the process, one of the greatest things you can do is help a candidate. You know, if there's a candidate you know who's running, if you can help them on their campaign, then you will learn everything you need to know to run. And, you know, and you'll be helping somebody else good, someone you believe in, get elected.
Well, if you want to file, you gotta go to the county clerk's office in LaPorte to file down the basement. When I filed, I caucused for Sir Al Whitlow's seat after he passed. I caucused for that. Very, very friendly, very helpful, very knowledgeable. They were great to me. So that's where you gotta go if you want to file.
Right, right. All right, other questions?
And it's not as intimidating as it seems, I swear.
It's fun.
It can definitely be a lot of fun.
It can be, yes. It can be very, yeah, really enjoyable. I mean, you know, getting out, talking to people, meeting people. You know, listening to, you know, what people think about the city and about what could be done better and, you know, that's all, it is a lot of fun.
And you will, I have one person sitting in this room that I never would have met if it wasn't for helping somebody with their, two people actually, we've got Angie back there, if it wasn't for helping people with their campaigns. So you develop these relationships that, you meet so many incredible people.
You do. You meet great people. Yeah, you meet great people running.
Did you have another question?
This gentleman right here, Tommy, right?
Yeah, I'm Tommy. Tommy Clawback, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street.
Can you mention something about Article Two of the municipal, as far as how to conduct the meetings?
Yes, you really, actually, Tim Beatty said that at a council meeting one time. That really stuck with me. You need to read that if you're gonna run for council.
And I can find it on E-Michigan City?
It's on MuniCode. You just type in Google, "Michigan City Municipal Code" and then it'll come up. It has all the ordinances and it's pretty much the bible of how the city operates.
Yeah, you can find out everything. Everything.
Jessica?
I've asked a lot of questions. I'm sorry.
You have not asked any questions. Jessica worked very hard in this last election cycle on the sheriff election. Anything you want to share about campaigning and?
This is Jessica O'Brien, you guys.
So, yeah, yeah. So is there anybody who really is pretty certain they're gonna run?
That wants to share that?
I'm running next cycle for school board.
Oh, for school board. So, yeah, that's great.
And what's your name?
Sanita Hatchet.
Sanita Hatcher?
Hatchet.
Hatchet. Oh, great, great. So, yeah, so that one will be in 2024.
And it's a little different.
It is a little different because it's nonpartisan. The whole letter won't change whatsoever. So, yes, Jessica?
I was crossing my fingers. Hopefully it doesn't change.
Oh, okay, okay. So I hope that you'll consider running for city council. Of course, there's also city clerk as well, which is actually a full-time job. That's, you know, that's not-
And mayor.
And ma, and man is mayor.
They just say full-time job.
Right, and, you know, I will say, some people, you know, because we have so many Democrats in Michigan City, some people who would normally be running as a Democrat might run as a Republican because the primary would be much easier. And then you'd run as a Republican. So, you know, our current mayor has run as a Democrat. I think he sat on the city council as a Democrat. Yeah, and now he's a mayor as a Republican.
You can switch.
So, but you are, you know, you are limited by the county chair who can, you know.
But you can change your plans afterwards.
Yeah, so, yes, you can't just switch that easily. I mean, the party chairs will, you know, object.
There are some rules.
Yeah, they'll object if you just, you know, switch around. So, Angie, have some-
I mean, I would just say, who in this room is open to, maybe if someone has questions about running, that they would be able to come to you? Because it seems like there's a lot of doubt and questioning and like, eh, I'm not so sure.
It's very scary.
But is there someone, anyone who wants to put their name out there? I'll put my name out there. I'm the county chair for the LaPorte County Democrats, Angie Hensman. If you want to talk to me, I'll stick around for a while afterwards. But are any of the folks that have been on the council interested in just saying, "Hey, I would be a mentor. I would help you along with that a little bit"? I'm always willing to have a conversation.
Yeah, same here. Anyway, if anyone wants to call or whatever, I'm happy to talk and, you know, answer any questions you have. I know it's very scary. And I think-
It's less scary though when you have somebody who's willing to help. I had Brian Dabney back there who, "Hey, this is how you do it. This is what we need to do." I had Sharon Karm who, "Hey, this is what you need to do." You know, when you have people who are there to help you, it's much, much less intimidating. So there are people in this room who will be helping you.
Yes, yes. You will, you will get help. Don't ever, don't think you're in this by yourself.
Again, all you have to do is ask.
Yeah, it's, yeah, that's, yeah, don't be scared of that. So, okay.
I just have one more. It's more of a question because we're trying to kind of keep track of how we're giving the message out to people. So can, can you tell me like who found out about this on Facebook? How did you guys find out about it? Email, web page?
Word of mouth.
Oh, radio.
Was it mostly radio?
I told them at county council meeting, she answered. Plus I just wanted to-
Facebook.
Two minutes, I'll cut my ass.
Email and Deb. Okay.
Marty Corley.
Which Facebook page?
No, Marty keeps me informed.
Good.
The economic development page.
Okay.
Good. And so does everybody know what ward they live in? That's a question. So that map, that big map is Michigan City and it will tell you, that's the new map and then it'll tell you which ward you're in.
Voter registration needs to revise it with the new precincts. There's a real good map on LaPorteCounty.gov. If you go to the voter registration page, it's really detailed.
I want to know, does that map reflect the redit?
Yes, yes. It was just approved like, I don't know, like a month ago by the city council. So that is the new one. So just a reminder again, so, you know, these QR codes will get you to all these documents and, you know, these are pretty much all you need to look at to know everything you need to know. Don't think you need to like, you know, know everything. You don't need to know everything to run.
I literally just sat down and told them, "I don't know all of the deadlines."
Yeah, nobody knows. Nobody knows all that stuff. So, and just as, you know, as a reminder that, so, I mean, everyone understands, I think, that, you know, you run for a ward, you gotta live in that ward. You know, you have a choice. You don't have to run just for that ward. You can run for the at-large positions. So at-large positions means, you know, you kind of represent the whole city. So, but you have to campaign in the whole city. So, but you're not, you know, you're not limited to running just in your ward, you know, to represent just your ward. You can do that or you can run at-large. And then at the at-large, there's often, I don't know, several and you pick, you know, it'll be six maybe on the ballot and you pick three. And then after the primary, it'll be the same thing. It'll just be a mix of, you know, the three Republicans and Democrats and you'll pick three out of them. So, all right, any other questions?
Guys, let's give them a nice round of applause. You guys are the best.
Yeah, so, yeah, and so, so if everyone's got the forms you need, if you, you know, and this is, I think- Yeah, so, yeah, and so, so if everyone's got the forms you need, if you, you know, and this is, I think this one has, you know, all the stuff, so make sure you got that one.
And the finance forms are at the door.